Was, he had said that he was gonna come to join us here in the community room. I just haven't seen him, but Mo is on. So I thought that Irv would be here today. I'll try to see if I can get in touch with them over the course of this meeting.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Thanks everybody for coming. And we'll try to go as expeditiously through the agenda as we can. It's a little bigger than I had thought for a closeout meeting, but there are a couple of things that I think we wanna address. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? John?
I'd like to add correspondence after Roman numeral nine.
Oh, really? I was thinking of adding it after six. Since correspondence really is new items.
Six H, after H, H I?
After H or after, as a separate Roman numeral, and it should always be on the agenda, even if there is none.
Well, that was one thing I was gonna propose when we got there. I don't care where you put it. I'd like to add correspondence to the agenda.
And there are two items, so we'll address those when they come up. Is that it?
Yep, for me.
Okay. Public comment for items not on the agenda. Hearing none. Approval of prior meeting minutes.
John Spearhead sent out two different meeting minute drafts. I don't know if you all feel comfortable approving those or not.
I don't recall two. I sent out December fifteenth.
No, no, you're right. I had sent you two different things.
Yeah, I'm working on the second one. I've been trying to help Owen out with these minutes, and I drafted the December fifteenth minutes that I sent out to you all.
Yep.
I didn't hear anything back, so.
I've reviewed the fifteen minutes, or the December fifteen minutes. We've also got older minutes that we haven't approved yet, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, but I haven't seen any changes to those yet, although there's some that are, that, there's a couple you have that predate my being on the board.
Right.
Yeah.
So I got them to go back as far as February that we haven't approved that Owen has given out. I don't know if everybody's had time to look at them through.
Yeah, I have, as to the best of my memory, okay approving those. There were three of them, I think, in that.
Yeah, there's February twenty first. Again, these kind of predate John. May fourth. And then the first one, John, I think that. I'm sorry, May fifth was another one. And then the first one that impacted you was January ninth, or November ninth, November tenth.
Yeah, I think there's some issues with those still.
Are there?
I believe so. I, let me find my minutes folder here.
I think I sent Owen back just the, on the November tenth. You referred to me as Vice Chair Gaudio, and I asked to take that off. That was the only edit I had.
I had November tenth. Yes, that's the only edit I had too, but I haven't seen a clean copy of that. But I'm, I can, I can, I'm prepared to make a motion to approve that with the striking the Ward vice.
Okay, that was, there were two on the tenth. There's one from nine AM, and then one from six PM. I don't know if you looked at both of those.
I did. Six PM and. Yeah, there was a, there was a, I forwarded this to Owen, there was a typo on seven E in the last sentence on E.
This is the six PM one?
Huh?
This is the six PM one?
This is the six PM.
Yep.
In seven E, the last sentence, it says "the" indicated. I think it's supposed to be "they" indicated.
Yep, good catch.
Then the executive session, oh, there's a typo on. Mine on ten, there's no. I don't remember what that was. I have typo, but I don't see it now. And we did not, technically, we did not table item eleven. I withdrew my request. We didn't actually vote on tabling it. But close enough, I'm good with that, if we just make those changes.
Okay. Yep, I'm okay. I didn't have anything in addition to those.
And.
So can I make them, just to keep this orderly, can I make a motion to approve the minutes of November tenth at nine AM with the. Ward vice struck from item one.
Okay, I second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Owen, you had your hand up.
I just wanted to say that I'm dealing with some emails and making sure Gus is good, and so I'm trying to track as well as I can with what you all are talking about. I just wanted to own up. I'm a little distracted. So I've gotten a lot of this written down, but some of these changes, if you all could just let me know, and I'll get them posted as quick as I can.
All right, well, can I make a suggestion? Don't do emails while we're in session.
It's specific to this meeting.
Yeah, I know that.
I was going to.
If that's the case, then maybe we should wait for clean copies.
Okay, that's fine. Okay.
I mean, no, I'm serious. I don't have confidence that we're gonna get these corrected, and.
I agree.
So. So I withdraw my motion on that one.
Okay.
All right, is that all of those?
So we don't want to do any of the other ones that.
I'm ready on.
Pertain to us before John?
Yeah, I'm good with that too.
That would be the February twenty first, nine AM meeting. It would be the May fourth, four PM meeting. It would be the May fifth, six thirty meeting. And those are all ones that predated John. And how about the December fifteenth meeting, John, that you've sent out? Are you?
Yeah, I was gonna move that separately.
Yep, yep.
Cause I can't vote on the other one, so.
I understand. Well, if you're okay with that, then I would move that we accept as written. I didn't have any edits. They're pretty short minutes. February twenty first. At eight, at nine AM, May fourth at four PM, and May fifth at six thirty PM minutes.
Second. And it's been moved and seconded. Of course, the only two people that can happen, know anything about those meetings are Jan and I, so. All in favor?
Gaudio, I.
Right side. Could you just give me those dates again real quick?
Yep, February twenty first at nine AM.
Yep.
May fourth at four PM. May fifth at six thirty PM.
Thank you. So I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes of December fifteenth, two thousand twenty.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Gaudio, I.
Spear, I.
Right side.
And Owen, I obviously abstained on the first three minutes. I don't know if you caught that.
Yep, and I know that we have some folks to discuss planning items, but Gus is on and is only available for a short window, and didn't know if he wanted to take that item out of order. So it would be item E under new business, we would take up next.
Uh, Mo and Irv and Jeff. I don't think this will take an inordinate amount of time, but are you guys up against hard stops?
I'm not, Walter. Irv's here. I can wait.
Jeff as well.
Mo? Okay, um, so, oh, yes, Owen.
Yes, so we looked over the budget, and specific to the technical support IT line, there was a healthy amount left over. We thought we might be able to buy this remote server plus do installation, all with the remaining budget monies. We had some issues come up last week that did require IT. So there's enough remaining in there to purchase this item, but not install it this year. But definitely, you know, this would be an advanced capability for the town. It would allow folks to access the server. I know Walter had some questions, so that's kind of the how we got here. And if this is a capability that the board wants to see installed next year, but the server itself purchased this year. That's why I brought Gus on to explain what it is that it does and any other additional costs that might be associated with it.
I thought it was a router.
Yeah, router, sir, you know, this is why I brought Gus, cause I'm a dum-dum.
Board members, before we start the inquisition, Gus, and by the way, Gus, how are you? Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Good to see you.
Good to see you too. John?
I'm just curious, what does this do for us? Do we need it, or is it just a luxury, or? And what are the downsides, downsides of doing it? Seems as though the more complicated we get, the more trouble we have, so.
So currently, you have a very simple router that doesn't have any VPN capabilities, that has no additional security features added onto it. It's a very basic, low-end, business-class router.
I like it.
You like that? So what this WatchGuard router does is it adds a lot of other features to it, extra levels of security, including intrusion prevention, filtering for websites, not allowing users to go out to certain websites. It gateway virus protection, where it actually will detect viruses coming into the network from the router, instead of your antivirus doing all of that work. It also has, you know, we don't need spam prevention, because all of that happens within the Office 365. But it does have network discovery, so if anything is going on, on your network, we can, we can pin that down to exactly what device is causing any sort of network issues, or has some sort of software that might be questionable running on it. The end part of it is, we've been, we've been putting a lot of these in during the pandemic, mostly because people need the ability to work remotely and have access to files from outside of the office. We, we, like I said, we've put these in a lot of businesses, and they either have access to the files directly on the server, or they're able to remote into their workstations at the office, so that they're able to work as if they're right there at the office.
So Owen. Where's the demand coming from, if any?
The demand is coming from just, it's like twofold. One would be on the operational end, so for example, if I'm done at the office here, but I wanna get some work done later that night, I have to go before I leave the office and grab any files that I wanna work on supplemental information, and I email it to myself. And then I go home, I do kid stuff, I put the kids down, and I work on things at home. If we had this, I would be able to pack up my stuff, go home, do kid stuff, set up, and then start working on those documents, having full access to the N drive. And if, for say, I, you know, for some reason I didn't send myself the right file, I'm kind of constrained to only what I put on my computer. And so that's kind of been my experience, but also, as we look at the COVID world, work from home, say, you know, even a healthy employee that just had contact or something like that, they're capable, they can work from home. It's gonna be us emailing them documents if they need it, and all that type of stuff, so it's now a, you know, this is what we would currently use it for, but under COVID, having that capability for the long run seems like a smart thing to discuss.
Okay, so refresh me. The N drive, what's on it?
Everything.
Actually, let me, let me, let me backtrack.
Yeah.
What are people going to have access to remotely tomorrow, when this is put into place, that they don't have access to now?
Gus can correct me on anything that I say, but everything that's on the N drive, which does not include certain things from the ambulance department, items that might be HIPAA-protected or things like that. These are retained files that we have put and compiled over time, plus our scanned drive. That's kind of the only question. Every once in a while, we'll get something where a scanned item might have a portion of it that is protected. But people could still access that here from the office. It just allows those credentialed employees to access it from their house.
What applications are on it?
There are no applications. It's just, you know, it's all the documents associated, you know, so any of your Word and Excel documents.
Okay, how do I access Trio remotely? Yeah, that was my question.
Trio is a completely separate application, and that would be one of the programs that we would, you wouldn't just log into the VPN and have access to Trio. That's where we would set up the remote access to each individual computers. Once you're connected to the VPN, you're basically inside the network, and at that point, we'll be able to remote desktop into individual computers. It eliminates the need to spend the extra money for having licenses for LogMeIn or TeamViewer for each user.
Uh, yeah, we're not using LogMeIn for anything.
So we would be able to access Trio remotely?
Yes, as long as you have a computer at the office, you know, so if you don't have a computer at the office to access Trio, then you, you know, that wouldn't really work, you know, over the VPN.
And we have two computers. One is the assessors, and then the other is Phil's.
And what about the assessing programs?
Vision.
The vision program.
That again will be a remote desktop into that computer in order to have access to it.
So same deal as Trio?
Yes.
So to speak, yeah.
Okay, so it's remote, what remote desktop application would be?
So it would be the built-in Windows, Microsoft Remote Desktop application. And we'll have to worry, you know, right now, we would never open up any ports on the router to allow direct remote access via remote desktop, just because that's a huge security risk. But the VPN connects any computer into that network, or any computer that has credentials into the network, so that then you can access those, those systems via remote desktop, as if you're in the office, sitting in front of the computer.
Oh, is our payroll and financial applications, are they all part of Trio?
Yeah.
Yes, and my bad, I misspoke. Those two computers that I was saying, assessors and Phil's, those are for Vision. Trio is on other, other computers. That was.
On all, is it on all of the computers?
The two front desk ones, plus Anna's, plus Phil's, to the best of my knowledge. It might be on the back office one, but I'm not quite sure, but the two front desks, so at least four in the main office itself.
Yeah, I think the assessor does use Trio as.
Yeah, he does.
Uh, link between Vision and Trio.
How about your computer, Owen? Is yours up Trio?
No. I don't, I mean, and it wasn't on there when I first got here, and when we did the upgrade of the computer systems, it never got carried over. I mean, I don't know how many ports Trio allows us to have. It's like an unlimited amount of ports or whatever, so it could be installed on my computer. It hasn't been in need yet.
I'm not sure how the licensing works for Trio either, so that's whether or not you have licensing for your computer or not.
I would think that your position would want access to Trio. I would have thought Terry had it. I mean, I'd be surprised if she had it on her desk.
But also, it might have also been because she was in the back office, and then I moved my spot to the front office. I don't know if that somehow didn't carry over.
I, I think you have Trio on your computer. You just may not use it, Owen.
A possibility.
So Gus, I log in. Tell me what the drill is for security.
Uh, so you log in, we have, we've got a SSL VPN client that gets installed on any of the computers that need remote access. You log in with your credentials. We have it set so that it will not remember your password. We disable that feature, so that if you're on a shared computer, it won't leave that password saved in there. Once you log into that, you next have a next step of remoting into your workstation, which again, you know, you've gotta use a new password. We typically set that up also to not save the password, but we don't have any control or the ability to change that setting on the individual computer. Now, we can only do that in the client. So there was a question about, about multiple two-factor authentication. We can set that up.
What?
What's that?
I'm a big fan of two-factor authentication.
Okay, and we certainly can set that up. I did get the, you know, it's a, it's a matter of installing a component on your existing server at the office. There's no additional cost for that part of it. And, but we would have to purchase licensing for the two-factor authentication part of it, because that has to be done offsite or on a different device. We don't want, we, you know, basically, you can't do it on the same device, because it eliminates the.
Then it's not two-factor authentication anymore.
Exactly, exactly. It defeats the purpose. So I did look up the licensing cost, and, you know, for, for two, no, sorry, for five licenses up to three thousand licenses, we're looking at twenty-seven dollars per license.
Forever or annually?
Annually.
And that, so just to, just to kind of like ground it again, there's enough remaining in this budget to purchase the router. You know, exactly the full cost going forward is kind of what Gus is now sketching out. So I haven't done a whole, like, lifecycle analysis and budgetary impact and things like that going forward into two thousand twenty-one. So it's almost like a two-part thing, you know? Do you want us to purchase that with the remaining budget monies now, with your general support, that we would try to work some of the two-factor authentication and any other installation costs into next year's budget? How do you wanna, how do you wanna do it?
Well, I have a question. How much does, remind me how much the router itself costs? This is, I assume this is a physical piece of hardware?
Yeah, it was like fifteen hundred and fifty or something, Gus?
Yeah, fifteen oh five, I think, and that.
Fifteen oh five is what you sent us on.
Yeah, yeah.
That includes years of security support and updates. So if anything happens to that router within, while it's covered by this support, you know, if it fails, they'll overnight a new one to you. At no cost, we'll just swap it out, we'll, you know, recover the config files and get it back up and running ASAP. There is, so that three-year security, every three years, does need to be renewed. And, you know, that's, it's about four hundred dollars every three years.
And didn't you say there was an installation cost too?
Yeah, there's the, there's the time to set it up. And I really haven't kind of gone through, you know, the, the total cost for the two-factor authentication part of it, setting up the Radius server and all the workstations. But if we were to just install the router without the two-factor authentication, I'm figuring four hours, so we might be up to six, eight hours with the, with the multi-factor authentication.
So it's, what does that mean in dollar-wise?
Uh, you know, around, you know, eight, eight hundred dollars for the installation.
So if I have this right, I just, cause I don't have any budget here. I, I have four hundred dollars every three years.
Yep.
Twenty-seven dollars annually times five?
Yes, well, depending, if you need more than five, then we.
Or, all right, whatever, six, seven, whatever it is. Fifteen hundred for the equipment and eight hundred to install it?
Yes.
Is that everything?
That's everything. I mean, obviously, that, you know, we're gonna have occasionally, you know, we'll go in, which is what we do on the server currently. It will go in and, and push any firmware updates and security updates. But a lot of the, you know, the intrusion protection, that's continually updated, but there are firmware and versions of the operating system that we have to manually push in, which don't take very long. We're talking fifteen minutes to install those updates.
So. As best, so. Amy. You mentioned that a lot, Owen, a lot of what Amy does is, is not part of this.
I mean, generally, yes, primarily because of, you know, the sensitivity around the document that she moves.
How about Brian?
He has sensitive documents as well. However, it's been my experience that the bulk of those are hard copies that don't necessarily, they make it into files, and they don't necessarily make it onto the N drive.
So I guess, I mean, conceptually, I believe in setting up the remote for workplace. Because I think that it's long, it's, it's no longer the wave of the future. It's been the wave of the present in a lot of places for a long time. But what I'm sensing here is that we're putting in a new tech stack that is gonna be used by one or two people.
Well, is Amy's material on another drive, because she must access that remotely, remotely now, I would think.
I, you know, I might be slightly wrong in this, but the the security around those documents are that she won't save them on the N drive. She'll save them on her computer, and there's a.
Common drive.
Yeah, so there's a password to get into her computer, and if you get in that, you can access certain things, but me, for mine, cannot access her stuff.
When you say her computer, you mean the town's computer that's assigned to her, or her?
Yes, yep, the town's computer that's assigned to her, yep. We, when we did our computer upgrades, we repurposed some of the best old ones to create.
Okay, yeah, I just, you kept saying her computer, so.
Yeah, well, we now have it to where the assessor has their computer, Code Office has their computer, and Amy has her computer.
But they're all the town's computers.
Yeah, they used to share stuff, and I think everything was done on the old ambulance computer in their dayroom. But when we had these old parts, because we did the upgrades, we kind of reconfigured some of them and created new workstations for folks.
Can I ask Owen a question? I guess, I guess what I'm struggling with a little bit, I, I don't really know enough to make a judgment about whether this is good or not. And, but my general experience is simple is better. But, but I am a little concerned about, I'd like to talk with Gus a little more about backup issues. But before we do that, just quickly, if you're not gonna install this until we do the budget in June, why are we rushing into this other than the fifteen hundred bucks? The fifteen hundred bucks can just close surplus, and we can re-budget the whole thing. I, I don't get the motivation for doing it now.
Yeah, the motivation for doing it now is, is the unknown of COVID and potential exposure that might happen tomorrow for town employees.
Right, but if you're not gonna do it to June.
Right, so when we had first initially discussed this, there was enough money in, remaining in that line to both purchase the item and install it. The two-factor authentication, some of the other costs as well, weren't necessarily known at that time. And we didn't have some of the extra hours that we needed from Gus last week. So when I had initially proposed this, there appeared to be enough money to buy it and install it with this year's remaining monies, where we have the authorization to spend no more than one quarters of next year's budget. Then theoretically, we could purchase the device and then absorb the installation costs in the beginning part of January of next year.
Okay, all right, well, that's different then. You said you weren't, you were gonna put it in. Okay, alright, well, that's different then. You said you weren't, you were gonna put it in next year's budget or something.
Well, and that, that became the question. If this was a bigger, broader thing that had additional costs that I wasn't aware of or started to spiral to a, a much more substantive thing, did we want to defer and just take it up as part of the normal budget process? Or is the need for remote because of the unknown of people potentially working from home or this or that? Is the need so great that we should figure out how to make it happen within the next month?
Uh, okay, I, I have a thought, if it's okay.
You're the chair.
Well. Um. I believe in remote access and work from home and work, or work, work from wherever you are. However, um, this will roll, if we don't spend the money, it will roll to surplus. Um, we then uh, in the budget cycle, in my opinion, um, will flush out. And I, I, having gone through um, yesterday, uh, six hours worth of struggling with a new implementation in my home. Um, I agree that simple is better. Um, however, simple and right are not always the same thing. Um, especially where security is concerned. Um, so we have not had, we have had the practice over the last few years of um, taking items that roll from one year to the next when there's still the need. In other words, something happened and we didn't uh, fulfill that need of applying that undesignedated fund from that particular item to the next year's budget. Um, we generally, if not always, have gotten budget committee uh, support for that. And in fact, uh, the motions to uh, do that are almost always come from Jeff North Graves. So my thought is that this, this is deferred um, and uh, we flush out the uh, what we're trying to do. Um, and justify it to ourselves and justify it to our constituents as part of the budget process in twenty twenty one.
Yeah, Owen, I would say that I agree to that. And, and I also think that gives us time to talk to the fire chief, the ambulance director, and see if there isn't some piece of this that we can enhance their ability. I, I, I'm not sure Amy holding that information on her computer, hard drive, if that's what I'm hearing, is the right place for it either because it's vulnerable to failure of that hard drive. So maybe there's another drive, not an in-drive, but let's for lack of another reason, call it the A drive for ambulance, that would be only for her material. But again, a, a common, you know, cloud, if you will, that, that holds that information beyond just her laptop. And then she would be able to log in and access it remotely if she needed. There is a drive that is dedicated to the ambulance only. Uh, so whether or not they're using that, that's the question, but it is there.
I, I assume she's backing up somehow or other. I, I, and I wanted to talk a little bit about backing up now. Um, I assume we're doing, we used to back up sort of physically. We would put it on a desk and somebody would take it home with them every night. And then once a week, we'd back up for that week.
Mm-hmm.
Doing it that differently, I understand.
Well, so right now you're doing a uh, you're doing a local backup as well as a cloud backup using uh, Cronus. Um, so that.
What do you mean, what, what do you mean by a local backup?
So a local backup being you're, you've got to back up to an external hard drive. So if something, you know, if there's a file missing or a file that got deleted or corrupt, we can recover that file very quickly. Or if the server crashed, we can recover the entire server very quickly. Uh, in the event of a fire or theft of your server, we have the ability then at that point to recover all of your data from the cloud.
Okay, but, but you don't, but you don't know if that's capturing all of our data. I mean, I could almost guarantee you it's not capturing the library.
No, it's certainly not capturing the library data and I really don't spend all that involved in the library.
Right, right, and, and we don't know if it's capturing, is it a capturing the assessing data?
Yeah, so the, 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 this is kind of where it goes back to whether or not, you know, if people are putting their data in the proper places on the server, then all of that data is backed up.
But that's a big if.
That's a big if. And that's something that we were, you know, we, we explained to everybody that the, the, the drives, the map drives that we've got on all of the computers, those are the places to be storing your data because they do, that data does get backed up. Um, not, you know, we've, we've been, you know, always have told clients not to store data on their local uh, desktop. Some people insist, but um, and some people have been burned by that.
Uh, it strikes me, we need to approach, if we're gonna do something like this, we need to maybe spend a little bit of resources um, with Gus and get a better assessment of, of who's doing what.
Yeah, I think it's worthy of a, of a conversation with the.
You know, have Gus talk to the ambulance director and the fire chief and so. I, I've got to spend the fifteen hundred dollars on that, although I realize we only have two days left, so. Owen?
Yeah, so I mean, definitely, and thank you, Gus, for some of the, you know, the ambulance has their own separate server because there are some things that I'm not, you know, hugely familiar with. So definitely encourage what you all said about talking with Brian and Amy and making sure that you get that. And then all the stuff about, you know, a thoughtful conversation during the budget process, all that makes sense. The only question that I have is, is there an event between now and June and the approval of that budget that would necessitate us in this office saying, hey, the situation has changed? I'm just trying to figure out, you know, let's just say that Phil or Anna or myself or whoever had contact with a COVID individual, we felt healthy, we wanted to work, but I have to stay at home. Is that a trigger of which we would say, we shouldn't wait for June and the approval of the budget and we should move forward on this now? Just something to think about because there, it's not broke, so we don't need to fix it. But what does broke look like to require, hey, board needs to vote to draw down surplus to fund these type things? Just something to think about between now and, and when the budget actually gets approved, hopefully.
Okay, um, so Gus, um, thank you for your uh, your efforts so far. I think uh, we're gonna defer this unless the board wants to vote to approve the uh, the acquisition. Well, I, I'd like to have Gus maybe give us a little proposal to assess our situation. Um, you know, what that might, just a little brief letter, half a letter, what that might look like and what that might involve cost-wise.
For the, for assessing your current, current.
Yeah, just to kind of figure out, you know, who's doing what and what we, I mean, I don't, I don't know if the other two board members support that, but I feel like I don't want to drop this. Um, and um, and I'm worried that stuff isn't getting backed up. You know, like is, I don't know.
Yeah, no, it's, it's something to be worried about. And um, you know, we could be um, we could create a bunch of policies that force everything to, to uh, end up on the server. I mean, that's a, that's a little bit of work and it's a little bit more network traffic. Uh, unnecessary network traffic at the beginning and end of each day. Uh, because it's gotta kind of push all of that data and synchronize it back and forth to the server. Uh, you know, so if somebody saves about all of their files throughout the day on their desktop, now we have to push all of that, you know, all at once back to the server. Um, and when you're talking about a bunch of people doing that, um, I think the, the better uh, path to go would be training and making sure everybody understands they need to store the data on the server. Versus us having to make some workarounds in order for that data to end up on the server.
I agree. So I, I like the idea of let's do an assessment of where we're at in overall, rather than just specifically in terms of remote access. Um, I'd like to move on because uh, we, we have tied up the uh, the, the, a leadoff hitters for this meeting for forty minutes unexpectedly. So um, do we need a motion to uh, um, give some marching orders?
No.
Okay. Hi, Mo. Um, Gus, have a happy new year. Thanks for your efforts so far and uh, you probably got more business out of this conversation coming than uh, than you would have anyway, so looking at that way.
Alright, well.
Are you, you're gonna send us something, Gus?
What's that?
You're gonna send us something?
Yes, I will send you something.
Okay.
And to close it out, I just sent an email including Gus, Amy, Brian, and the board saying that we just need to do some, some conversations so everyone can be on the same page.
Okay, good. Thanks, Gus. Happy new year.
Happy new year.
Alright, um, so um, personally, I don't see the need to crawl through all this planning board documentation that Owen sent, since I have some just simple questions for Mo and Herb especially, um, and then Jeff as a historian. And what I would like to hear from you two is, what's the division of labor? With the, first of all, affirm that uh, the planning board uh, uh, will generally hold to its third Thursday of the month schedule. That's your, your plan going forward. And then tell me who does what. So what's the responsibility of the chair in terms of setting up the meeting and doing the agenda? And what's the responsibility of the, the CEO? And the fact that you're only doing Zoom meetings, who's running the tech stack? Or who's running the technology? So who wants to go first? And you, you guys, obviously, John and, and.
Walter, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Is there an issue here or a problem or is?
I don't know. Uh, what, my, my sense was that I see Mo doing logistics for these meetings that don't fit in our position description for the code enforcement officer.
Alright, yeah, I figured, I would like to.
Who's speaking?
Yeah, so I'll just take the, the technology end real quick before Mo and Herb. So because I've basically been managing uh, all of the Zoom stuff, Mo has access and credentials. She set up meetings, but I end up sitting in on them so I can make them YouTube live. And I, I just sit on them to lis- listen in as well and if they have any questions. The first meeting that we did, I was, I was a pretty substantive um, member in that discussion, but since then, um, and, and Mo and I having good conversations and Herb being board chair, the last meeting, I literally just kind of listened to it in the background and hosted it through my computer. But planning board and Mo and everyone did a great job.
Okay, so um, deviation from history as I see it. How often did Terry go to the planning board meetings? Herb, Jeff?
This is Herb here. I don't know if she attended. Usually the, the CEO was there. And by the way, as the agenda, the CEO always, you know, they, people, townspeople bring their projects to her or him and then they send us the, they, they make up the agenda.
Okay.
And then they, they bring it to us. Maybe Jeff?
Yeah, yeah, traditionally, the CEO has been the administrative arm of the planning board and has, has actually driven the agenda.
That's not described in uh, any documentation that I've seen.
Well, the only documentation that would show up in is in the CEO's um, job description, which is completely the purview of the select.
Right, right, it's not there. That's my point.
Well, it does say the CEO serves the staff to the planning board.
Well, there's, that's a.
And I think that's a, that's a very broad net.
There you go. That's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to get at here, is that we're, we're not specific about, about that element of what Mo's responsibilities are.
My vision and the, certainly the history here has been that the, just what Jeff said. The CEO is the administrative arm of the planning board. Um, and I don't know that we can quantify every little thing.
Yeah, when, when you say, when you say the CEO is the staff of the uh, planning board, what other staff do they have? And, and so that would be all encompassing, I would surmount.
So can I add, add a couple of things? This is Ryan Menakis. I'm sorry, my video. Um, just my perspective. So I agree with Owen. I'm, we did do a, a good meeting last week. Um, I guess if I was to criticize it administratively, the planning board was getting application information sort of in real time, um, as we were trying to consider the application. Otherwise, I believe we followed our bylaws and, and our statutes and we did the service we needed to do for the applicants. And by the way, that was the first piece of business, actual business, working business that I've seen in over a year and a half now. So we don't do a lot of that business. Um, so I'm happy for that. Walter, thank you for bringing this agenda up. To me, I know that we don't want to pour through these documents, but the, the, the fundamental issue right now is that we've got two sets of bylaws that disagree with each other. It's not clear to me which one. Well, they also disagree with the original warrant that enacted the, the, so the planning board to begin with back in, I guess, seventy-three and amended in, in eighty-nine or something like that. So, and on, on important items like what constitutes a quorum, um, there's, there's disagreement on that in our governance documentation that needs to be resolved. So there is a problem. That's a problem to me. Um, and I guess in terms of actual execution of the board, my expectation is that the bylaws would define responsibilities of people that respond, that, that participate in the board, the board officers and the, and the CEO if necessary. Um, and that's, uh, it's very broadly said. I mean, basically the bylaws, I think both of them, regardless of which one you might take to be the current version, both say the chair will form, you know, set the meeting and the agenda. Um, and that's really all it talks about with respect to officer duties. So my position is if you fix the bylaws, then you fix all of the confusion or lack of uh, clarity.
But I, I'll talk to the bylaws. There's only one set of bylaws that are current.
Right.
That's the most recent one.
So those are the ones that are in conflict. So they say that a quorum is three people, when as I understand it, the version that the, the town actually voted on says that a quorum's four people. There's other disagreements as well, but.
Right, right. So, so the bylaws are not the ones in question. What's in question is the original and the amended uh, changes to the ordinance that established the planning board. There are in fact, two versions of that within a year of each other. One is a document that comes from who knows where, that is dated prior to the actual wording in the warrant that was voted on. But by changing the, that ordinance, by changing that planning board ordinance, you can eliminate all the issues associated with this and go with one set of bylaws. The, the reason the bylaws are different is because in the original version of the ordinance, it called for a six, seven-member board and established five or at four, right, four, which is.
Orum, and then it went to five-member board and three is a quorum.
Correct.
But again, I don't have any evidence of when these were approved or voted on or, you know, all I have is PDFs that aren't signed and really aren't dated, so I don't know.
Well, there's, there's only one that is, there's only one that has evidence of it. And that is the warrant in the, in the town meeting that spells out the ordinance. That has to be the document that we go with. We gotta avoid all the rest of them.
That's the nineteen seventy-three.
There's one from two thousand and sixteen, there's one from the, I guess, like nineteen eighty-nine. I, I have bylaws from way back then.
Yeah, but the bylaws are not the question.
Okay.
Okay, it's the ordinance that establishes the planning board. That's in question. And there was, there was a document that, that predated that warrant. It was the year prior to the warrant on the meet, the town meeting that approved the establishment of the planning board. And tho- those two documents are actually different, which makes no sense whatsoever.
So that's a document we don't have. We've got all these other documents, but we don't have the ordinance, if I understand your.
Well, we've got two copies of the ordinance. One of them that predates the town meet. One of them predates the town meeting, the other is in the. One of them predates the town meeting. The other is in the town meeting. Owen sent that out. It is the verbiage in the warrant. Because it was a small ordinance, it was duplicated in the ordinance.
Let me stop you for a second. The earliest one I have is nineteen seventy three. It's called the Establishment of a Municipal Planning Board as voted on by the townspeople in nineteen seventy three. I don't see one that's earlier than that.
That it's not earlier than that. It is. It is a separate one in nineteen seventy four that's actually embedded in the warrant article for the town meeting.
Okay, that's the one I don't have then.
It's right in the Town Report.
Correct. It's in the Town Report. And 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 Owen sent that out. That that actually complicated things even more because it's within a year of the document that we had been holding up as the establishment.
Yep.
And it would have been the very next town meeting. So because the wording in the actual warrant is different from that document that we have, that it predates it, we have to assume that at some point they changed it in the warrant. And oh, by the way, most of what they changed in the warrant is similar to what was changed in nineteen ninety. So it is very convoluted. The bottom line is you make one change now, you make changes to that document now, and it clears up everything. So that's the document that I sent out the other day.
Well.
Jeff, I have a question after John.
We have two. I think we got two different balls in the air here. One is, we know we have an issue with the ordinance, the original ordinance being out of sync with the bylaws. The Board can amend bylaws or propose to the select to amend its bylaws at any point in time.
But no, actually, the Board can amend them, not not.
Well.
The Select Board.
The Planning Board establishes its own bylaws, correct?
Correct.
I thought it said somewhere the Board had to approve them, but whatever. Okay. Just set that aside for a minute. I think it does somewhere, but set that aside. So the bylaws can be updated now. We're not going to update the ordinance till at least June. Town meeting vote.
Correct.
So so and I think we all acknowledge there's an issue there and we'll just we just have to work as we have been for the past forty years. What we have until we can fix it in June on that side. But to me, that's a very different issue than the issue of of who does the agendas. I mean, I just, I guess I don't.
I agree with you.
I don't understand why this isn't even an issue, I guess. So I still don't get it.
I agree with you a hundred percent because but the bylaws are not going to tell you how the CEO interacts with the Planning Board, because the bylaws are the is the Planning Board document, not the CEO's document. That has to come from the Select Board.
Right, right. So on the third Thursday in February, there will be a new town administrator, hopefully. So who's gonna and I think that we'll probably still be Zooming. So who does that?
In my opinion, it's Mo.
Fine. That's the whole point is to make that clear to everybody because.
I would assume she would have been doing that all along.
And 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 just to add a little more to it, the Chair does have a role in establishing the agenda. The the staff arm, which is Mo, recommends to the Chair what the agenda should look like. And in fact, traditionally has said, we have no business, therefore no meeting. And so the Chair would then say, okay, no meeting because we have no business. So so we have, we have a role for the CEO. It is not setting the agenda. It is recommending to the Chair what the agenda should look like. The Chair sets the agenda in every committee you can even ever think of.
Right.
I agree. That would be and that's how it appeared to be happening under Bill when I first joined the Board, but then, you know, personnel and pandemic happened and regular business wasn't kind of regular anymore. But I agree.
You guys had a successful meeting last Thursday.
Yep.
And can we, are we going to replicate that from now until forever?
I hope so.
All right. Then I think we don't need to drain this issue, that issue any further. And then we have to think about what we're going to do in June. Does that make sense?
Agreed.
I have a question for Jeff.
Shoot.
Can you see this on your computer? This is from July twenty first, two thousand and sixteen. These are some bylaws from the Planning Board. Are you familiar with that?
Yep.
That one there. How much is there a change from the twenty twenty town meeting from this four years ago?
Twenty twenty? No, there was no change to that.
No change. So this is the current one, the two thousand and sixteen?
Correct.
I thought, yeah, okay.
Can I just?
And just to be clear, there is there is an issue because that document says you have a quorum of three. The ordinance says you have a quorum of five. That is, in fact, the issue that we need to fix going forward. I think it's moot currently. But it is an issue that needs to be fixed.
Okay.
And it needs to be fixed in the ordinance because you only have a five-member board. So five quorum doesn't match.
Correct.
Agreed.
So we got to amend the, well, it looks like the Planning Board approved this in two thousand and sixteen.
That is correct.
You just got to just you just need to, I guess, paragraph two, line A, whatever it is, that needs to be put into the ordinance.
Well, yeah, that's there's a few other problems with the ordinance that need to be fixed. It recommends either at least one or no more than one, depending on which version you look at, Select Board members being on it, which is which is illegal. There's a couple of other cleanup things. It it talks about the Chairman and he will. So those things need to be fixed. But but the bottom line is that's easy to fix. The only issue is that it doesn't happen till June.
Okay.
And we've already referred this to the Ordinance Review Committee recommend these changes and they've already sent them back to us. So.
Correct. That is correct.
We're just sort of on hold here until June to make these corrections and we're just gonna. I think we just assumed we're going to have to operate the way we have been for the last forty five years until we get to June to make these corrections.
Yeah, the only two issues that could cause a problem is if you end up making a significant decision with a quorum of three as opposed to a quorum of five, it could be contested. And the other issue is if you have somebody on the Planning Board who does not reside in the town, then that could become an issue. But that one's moot. If you continue to have five members present, it becomes moot. So it is a non-issue unless somebody contests it.
So the Mo, you know how to run the technology. Is that correct? That's that's really the thing that I'm most concerned about.
That's correct. I have a login and everything for our Zoom meetings. I just don't know how to do the YouTube, but I can coordinate with Owen in order to figure that out.
Okay, Owen.
So yeah, so there's like three different conversations going on here. I think that we're getting some good clarity. Like Jeff's been saying, the ordinance conversation and the bylaw conversations are separate conversations. However, they are tied together that at the end of the day, we want those documents to have harmony between them and not conflict. So ORC has provided some recommendations. Those will get to planning. Planning will be able to look at them. They'll get to the Board. The Board will be able to get to look at them. By the time we get closer to town meeting, whatever ordinance proposed should just match up with the bylaws, and that's good. And how did we get here to this meeting? Yes, with the new code officer and the pandemic and a pause on everything. By the time we got back into full operational swing, there were some kinks that needed to be worked out. And as it relates to the technology stuff, the only reason I sat in on the meeting last time was it wasn't until a little before the meeting, I remembered, oh, geez, does Mo know how to do YouTube Live? And via text, we couldn't figure that out and I wasn't going to explain it to her. She had gone into the town Zoom, set up the meeting. Those were the credentials that got sent out. It's going to take a couple of minutes for me to walk her through. I just hadn't done it yet. So as far as planning, meeting regularly, having good technology, having good understanding between the Chair and the Code Officer and the Administrative Office on what we're doing, we are at a very, very good place on that right now. So we got here in large part because the meetings hadn't been going well. But we've worked a lot of those kinks out and I'm very confident going forward.
Okay. Well, as we wind you down, I want to give more thought and to eliminating YouTube Live and figuring out how to do what most other towns are doing, which is to distribute the Zoom credentials to anybody who wants to join a public meeting and get rid of another step in the text act in accordance with John's focus on simplicity. Jan?
And just before we leave this, if I understood right, Jeff, you sent out a copy of the actual warrant from nineteen seventy four that that addressed this issue?
Owen sent the warrant out. I sent out a, I retyped it because, again, it's only in PDF. So I retyped it in document and I made change, recommended changes to it. So that's that's a.
Owen, would you please send me that? That's the only one I don't seem to have.
I don't have it either, so please send it.
We got it this morning. We got it this morning.
No, well, that that was Jeff's retype. I'll provide clarity on that. But if I had to, if I can remember correctly, it's the part that it's the the one that talks about the Conservation Commission. Jeff, is that right? That just above the Conservation Commission was that language about?
I believe so, but I'm not positive. I was.
Anyway, so I believe it's been sent to you all, but it probably got lost in a, hey, it's a Conservation Commission. But by the by, this is mentioned as well. But I'll get that to you today.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be today, but I'd like to have that packet because it's the only thing I don't have, which is the the piece from the, even if it's just a scanned copy, you know, from that nineteen seventy four town meeting.
Absolutely. Yep.
Well, now I'm confused because this morning I got an email from you, Owen, with proposed amendments to the seventy three Planning Board. It had strikeouts and underlines. It struck out, the Board will prepare the comprehensive plan. Is that?
That is the that is the PDF document that Jeff's been referring to that he typed out and brought up to ORC and ORC had a discussion about. So that was based on.
We did get, so we do have that. We got it this morning.
That is, that is correct. What what is there, what is there in in writing that gets struck out is what was in the ordinance that was embedded in the town meeting warrant.
Right, so this.
I think that that's the most current. Although it can be argued, the previous one, the seventy three actual document, which is a which is a PDF, a scanned document that came from who knows where has is slightly different. There are minor differences between the two of those.
I understand that. I just want to make sure I understand what this is. This is the ORC's recommendations regarding amendments.
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
So that that has the heading amended in twenty twenty one. Just got it. Just looked at it.
Just got it this morning.
Yes, that is correct. And and just to add one more thing, I I agree with you going forward with the Administrator association with the Planning Board. That needs to be minimal. The the Administrator should only be posting minutes and letting people know when there are meetings and the agendas online. That should that should be the limit of the Administrator's role. There is a very, and the reason the Select Board can't be on the Planning Board is because of the laws of the state regards Planning Board and going forward if there is a challenge. And if you have the Administrator associated with the Planning Board, then you you mess that whole system up.
Yeah, I I agree. Thank you, Jeff. I've been obsessing over that. Among other things, ever since I showed up and proposed the junkyard ordinance, because I thought I was stepping out of my bounds.
Well, you can do that as a citizen. You can do that as a citizen.
Well, yeah, that's not why how I rationalize. Reiterate that I was told once upon a time to stay away from the Planning Board.
And and just to add to it, the Junkie Yard Ordinance, the ORC is not doing anything at all with that. We we don't even have a current copy of it, the most current copy. That that is completely Select Board and Planning Board. The ORC has never been involved in that and does not intend to unless you give us some other guidance.
Okay. All right, folks. So Mo, hook up with with Irv to craft the agenda for your January meeting and if you don't mind, one or more of us might poke in on the Zoom just to see how it goes. John?
Just one final. I think the most critical thing we need to do is to post meetings in a timely manner.
Yes, we're hearing about when that doesn't happen loud and clear.
And I guess I'm just reiterating that for Mo's benefit, that, you know, posting it the day before doesn't cut it.
Right, and I'm aware of the, you know, the statute and the last meeting, we gave five days' notice, which which met that. So that's definitely something that I'm going to be more mindful of and moving forward.
Thanks.
No worries.
All right, folks. Thank you very much.
Does that cover both A and B under new business?
As far as I'm concerned, it does.
More than I'd like to say to the selectmen. If you have any questions for me, anytime. Give my phone number, have my email. Just let me know.
Thanks, Irv. Thanks, Mo. Thanks, Ryan. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Happy New Year to all of you and be safe and well, please.
You as well. You guys have a good day.
Is there anybody on YouTube, Owen?
No.
Interesting.
I mean, there's two other people watching it, but no one's commented.
All right, so personnel policies. Why don't we just schedule a workshop?
Yep.
And John, you're the gating item here because you're going to be probably in like Myrtle Beach or someplace, Hilton Head for most of the winter, yeah?
Eight weeks in St. Simon's.
Yeah.
And I won't have as much time then either because the golf courses are open.
Wear your mask.
Yeah.
So what's your pleasure?
But I can I can Zoom just like we are now. I mean, it doesn't matter whether I'm.
Okay, when are you going?
Probably like the fourteenth. And I'll be on the road for a couple of days. So I wouldn't want to do it on the fourteenth, fifteenth, sixteenth, something like that, but.
Of January?
Yep.
Okay, okay. How about the twenty eighth?
Twenty eighth of January?
Yeah.
Can I? Can this be like maybe an end of the day, we start at three or four? I just I have some things on Thursdays at five thirty. I mean, I can I can shift those things around, but my evenings on Thursdays are just a little more difficult.
All right, well, I.
I'm not sure, Owen, that you need to be at a workshop.
Fine by me.
It's a discussion that the three of us need to have, you know, before we get, you know.
Right. As long as someone in the office, and I think Anna probably could could run the technology.
Yeah, I would just say typically when you have these types of conversations, you you have your administrator just to provide additional input as the person who's kind of like implementing that document. But however you want to work it is fine. I was just letting you know. just to provide additional input as the person who's kind of like implementing that document. But however you want to work it is fine. I was just letting you know.
So what's your, what's your preference early in the day?
Sure, anything during normal business hours.
Okay, fine. John, Jan, um, I'm completely open that day. So, um, and I just threw the day out because it's, it's an open day in my calendar.
I'm open too.
Is there a reason why you want to push it out so far?
No, um, I, I was, um, no, we can do it.
I was, I mean, I, I, I'll be honest with you. I have, from now to the fourteenth, I have quite a bit of time on my hands and, um, be willing to work on different items, which is why I volunteered to do those minutes for Owen. Um, um, so, and I would be more than anxious to, you know, try to do some work on, on some of this, um, over the next few, couple of weeks.
Okay, so we have a meeting on, um, a, a, a regular meeting on the fifth. How about the twelfth?
Yeah, doesn't take advantage of my time. I'm leaving the fourteenth.
How about the seventh? How about that Thursday?
Yeah, that, that could do something. Or even, or even the first week, to be honest with you.
Well, the first week, uh, is this week.
No, it's next week. So neck, next week, Monday of next week, so one week from today is Monday, the fourth, January fourth. Your meeting's January fifth, and then sixth and seventh, there's the Wednesday and Thursday.
How's the morning of the seventh?
That, that's good. That gives me some time.
You want to do, uh, an eleven, eleven AM? Ten?
Ten, ten sounds good.
Ten.
Ten's okay with me.
Okay.
One seven at ten?
Yep.
And then if I could, so I, I provided and have, uh, I, I'll be providing some additional personnel policies. Two birds with one stone gives you all some things to look at on how other towns are doing it as you do, kind of a, a more holistic, uh, review of the whole personnel policy. And then just because, um, there's some really descriptive language about the shellfish warden in our personnel policy. I figured I would grab the policies from the five member towns. So that gives you good exposure to some other best practices other towns are doing, but also has you see how your shellfish warden language does or does not match up with surrounding towns. So it's a little bit of a kind of two birds, one stone thing.
All right. Yep, I read all that. Okay. Item D.
Item D, um, I got a little more clarity.
The broadband coalition.
Yeah, so like not in specificity, um, but I did talk with Audra about it. What they are trying to do is things for fiber. I know we always talk about broadband and I think your point, Walter, about the difference between high speed and, and fiber itself is very valid. They are focused more on fiber and they are focused on fiber to rural areas within the town. Like I, like I mentioned, I think in my email, even Camden with all of their resources and the three-ring binder running right up Route One, they still struggle with getting that last mile, getting the folks that are a little more on the back road. So I know that there aren't a ton of similarities between us and Camden or us and Rockland, but they're all still trying to get it to those last users. And the last little bit on that is, um, I did have quite a long conversation with Kate Green and her husband. I apologize, I forgot his name. Um, but both of them are interested in, um, being kept aware of this, potentially sitting in on some of those, um, conversations with the, the coalition. Um, so there are folks in town that are interested in potentially putting some of their time forward. So it's not something that would fall completely on the board.
Okay, well, that was, uh, that was key for me because, um, and I'm glad to see it's Kate. Go ahead.
Ju- just because it popped up, um, Penny wanted you all to know. Um, she commented on YouTube and said, I'm here. Uh, I feel it is important to continue posting meetings to YouTube for those unable to attend live. So just getting those thoughts across.
Okay.
Um, so I, you know, I don't think that you all have to vote on anything right now. Really, it was, it was, what I was attempting to get was, is there even a desire to try to have an interested member of the public? Is there a desire for more knowledge around this? Or are we just not at a place and there's no point at all?
Well, it's difficult to answer because it's hard to say what, um, what's going to emerge in terms of, uh, what investments being are, should be made by whom. You know, if this was like encourage consolidated communications to replace their, their, uh, uh, twist and pairs with, uh, fiber. Um, you know, that's great. I, I can't wait till, till they do that on my street. Uh, but if the, the drill is for the town of, uh, South Thomaston to, uh, go string fiber, um, all over the town, that's a horse of a different color. So Jan, I'm sorry, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I, I, I think we should be involved in the discussion, but I don't really see it as a selectman kind of job. I think I would like to see a couple of interesting people from the town that could be part of a committee. You know, that, that would be involved in, you know, broadband slash fiber, uh, access, you know, for South Thomaston. Couple of reasons, as Owen's brought out, you know, I know that, uh, the airport is doing some things and there's some opportunity for certainly for Owl's Head and for South Thomaston as those towns that border the airport, to be able to take advantage of that. Uh, I also think there's some synergy developing, uh, you know, with towns like Rockport. You know, they seem to be very eager and taking the lead, you know, that may, and now Knox County, that may again complement, uh, what we want to do. I don't see it happening this year, maybe even, you know, next year, but I think it's coming. And I think the demand signal is there for it. You know, if COVID has had a plus side to it, it's been, uh, you know, the better understanding and reliance, of course, on, you know, working from home and from kids working from home to school, distant learning. Uh, you know, we, we need, Jan's opinion is that at some point broadband or fiber needs to be just like electricity to every home. You know, it, I think it should become a, a, a standard utility service that is expected and needed. Uh, it's only, the demand's only going to get broader. So I do see some opportunity. I'd like to see us involved. Uh, I don't think it needs to be a selectman. And if we've got some, some interesting people that would like to be, uh, listen in on the committee, they're not going to commit the town to anything without coming to us. You know, you know, before any money is going to get spent, but it would keep us appraised of what's happening around us and what opportunities there are. I think there's going to be grant money at the federal and state level, uh, if we raise our hand in the right time. So that's my thoughts.
John?
Yeah, I was thinking similar. I was thinking that we perhaps should form some sort of ad hoc committee. Um, and, um, of probably three to five members. And I think we could leave it open like that at three to five members, um, and puts a notice on the website, maybe send it out on the listserv and, and have people get back to us if they're interested in serving on that ad hoc committee. Um, and I know people are going to say, what's it involve, what's, what, what is my participation going to involve? And we're going to say, well, we don't know yet. But, um, I, I, I like this. I, I guess I'd like us to formalize it a little bit. Um, I just feel if we just leave it informally, it'll pot, potentially drop by the wayside. Um, so I was, um, I was actually thinking of making a motion to, um, uh, to that effect if, if, if you folks are interested in that.
Yes, I'd appreciate that.
All right, well, I will, I move that we form a ad hoc broadband advisory committee. Is that a good name? Or should, doesn't need a wider name. I'm not a techie, so.
A lot of folks have just been doing technology committee. Um, and, and it really kind of broadens or narrows depending on the select board, but as far as the name, technology committee has been a go-to.
Yeah, I, I don't want them to think that they got to come in and look at the town office computers, but I mean, but, but.
However you want to, it's fine.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure. Uh, I guess I'll say a, um, a, I'll, I'll say a technology committee. Um.
And serve, can I make a suggestion?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
To serve, to serve as a liaison between the town of South Thomaston and the, um, the broadband coalition, however it's being described.
Okay, so I'm willing to reform an ad hoc advisory committee to serve as a liaison between the local Knox County broadband coalition. How's that? Consisting of three to five members.
Sounds good.
I like it. I'll second it.
All right, it's been moved, been seconded. Um, any further discussion? All in favor?
I sphere.
I go to you.
I writes, and Owen, if you can write that up and put it on the web, please.
Yeah, absolutely. And then.
And the list, and the listserv too.
Yep, so I'll send that. I had two questions, well, one question and, and a comment. You guys just answered my question. The comment is, I agree with everything that was said, and especially some of the timelines on when fiber might actually get laid. Um, if there's one thing to just think about, it would be, you know, fast forward three to five years when we're ready to do this and we've, we've worked with other folks and we've gotten grants for the planning and it's offset some of the engineering costs. And we now have a shovel-ready project, but it's only going to run past, you know, in eighth of the homes in town. And we're going to need taxpayer dollars to, you know, fund portions of this. The people down in Jan's neck of the woods is going to say, you know, why am I paying to run fiber from the airport to the town office? I don't get to, you know, utilize this, this increased connectivity. The, the TIF district, I've been bringing up a TIF district. This town's never done one. They are semi-complicated. They can range in a whole bunch of different ways. But the reason for bringing it up now is a TIF district takes years and years to start building up the funds that can then be utilized to reinvest in the district as defined by the town. And so of all the different things you don't have to make a decision on, making a decision on whether or not you want to move forward on a TIF district to coincide with the area that you might want to run this fiber will help your five years in the future selves fund this project. And I would recommend me not necessarily, I mean, I could talk about this. I think Jeff's aware and Jeff can talk about this. I'm sure John had some exposure. But TIF districts definitely need to be set up with care. And so getting Kristin or some other legal guidance on that, if that's something that you want to do, but I would just strongly encourage you to think about setting up a TIF district, uh, specific for this and keeping it kind of constrained to the items that you all might want to reinvest in.
Comments, John?
Is this something other towns have done, Owen, that you're aware of? Other local towns?
Yeah, so we did it, we did it in Rockport. We, it was a, it was a thing with main media and people got all huffy and they were like taxpayer dollars, taxpayer dollars. Luckily, there was a TIF district set up. And so of the to, and I can't remember the numbers because it was like eight, ten years ago, but of a total like forty thousand dollar project, um, some money came from, um, the main media, they offset. And then there were TIF district monies utilized to offset. So at the end of the day, like the town tax base paid like a thousand bucks or something on a forty thousand dollar project because of the utilization of TIF funds.
Well, that sounds like something this committee could look into.
Yeah, and when we start talking about stuff like this, there are, from my time in Rockport, talking about fiber to the home, because we did this entire fiber to the home project, there are many, many different ways of skinning this cat. It can be a municipally owned service, just like the telephone companies used to be or whatever. It can be something where we're just incentivizing private business. It can be completely hands-off. It can be a whole huge range of different funding mechanisms, who owns what, who maintains what, how does it all get put together? And starting this process and working with this group and utilizing grant monies to plan will help put those meat on those bones of which is the best scenario for South Thomaston because it's not one size fits all.
What does the acronym stand for?
Tax incremental financing. So let's just say, for example, we set up a TIF district, Walter, and it includes your house and your house is, is assessed at a hundred thousand dollars when we set the district up. And then next year, your house is worth a hundred and ten thousand dollars. You're going to pay taxes on that hundred thousand dollars. That's going to go into the town revenues as a, a real estate property tax revenue. That new increase in value, that ten thousand, bringing your house from a hundred to a hundred and ten thousand, the taxes generated on that ten thousand will get put off into the side and it'll get put into the TIF fund.
Right. I don't need any more taxes. Thank you.
Well, what I'm saying is the monies, the increase in value, say if we ran the district down seventy-three past the gig store, all the increase in value from when we set the district up, that gets put off and you define how you can use those funds. And one of those things defined could be broadband or connectivity.
Okay, I, I, we don't need to drain this, I don't think, right now. Um.
Would you like me to communicate with Kristin to see if she just has some tips?
No, I think that's, no. I, I think that's premature, very premature and.
But again, I'm just trying to stress the point that it has to be premature because these monies accrue over years. And if you don't get it started now, by the time you actually want to run something, there's no money.
Well, Owen, you're assuming that's the way this is going to be financed. And I don't think that's a good assumption right now. I think there's an opportunity. There may be federal money, there may be state money, there may be other ways to finance this. And if we do it as a, they're looking to do this as a regional, uh, you know, broad, regional initiative, process, at least the county. So, you know, maybe there's going to be some kind of a regional TIF, if you, if you want to call it that, or some regional financing tool. So I'm going to hear what you're saying, but I, I kind of agree. I think we're, we don't want to get too far out in front of that.
No, and I.
I, I agree. I'd, I'd like to set up the committee and maybe this is one of many things that committee could look at.
Right.
That's fine. I just think that the hundred percent grants are few and far between. They like to see that some money is coming from the town and being thoughtful and setting up a district, TIF district as a way of doing that and not impacting the overall tax rate.
Okay, fine. Um, you, 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 you're trying to argue or win a point here, which, uh, um, you might have asked your team that we're, we're really, um, not engaged at this point.
And that's actually kind of my point is if you want to, if your future selves want to thank your current selves, you, you need to look into it now because this is not something that happens overnight and it takes years to get money enough to win its our twenty percent share.
I, I understand that. It's, it's like putting money into the fire truck reserve.
Similar, yep.
Yeah, so can we move on, please?
Yep. Um, okay, we, item E has already been taken care of. Okay, so this is what I know and I'll leave all the towns out of it. This is what I know apparently, and maybe Jeff knows because he did all of his county stuff for someone else. This mutual aid for public works, it's a mutual aid and assistance agreement for Public Works Department located within Knox County. Apparently that document had been circulated like nine or 10 years ago and signed, but they hadn't renewed it in forever. Under COVID now, one specific town had concerns about keeping plows going if people went out and they wanted to be able to yank public works people from other towns. Um, the only thing like I mentioned in, in my report and my apologies for getting it to you late, I haven't reviewed this document with a fine tooth comb. I don't know if there's a provision in there because we don't have a public works department. But is there a provision that says public works department and or contract services to provide similar blah, blah, blah? And now all of a sudden by signing this, we've tied Jimmy Calleck into helping Thomaston if they're down a person. So barring that, I can't see any reason not to sign it. But I also don't, I mean, this seems to be generated by concerns within one town and I'm just a little hesitant to have us sign onto a carte blanche. But at the same time, do we get access to St. George's stuff and, and Rockland's stuff? Uh, this kind of came a little bit last minute. I'm sorry, I haven't reviewed the whole thing. Um, but I don't know if Jeff has any thoughts about when this was done 10 years ago and why.
I'm not familiar with, I'm, I'm familiar with mutual aid for fire departments and for ambulances, but not with public works. Um, I, I think you'd have to read the document and figure out whether it's applicable or not.
Unlike Congress, I'd like to read it before we sign anything. So I wouldn't sign anything on this until.
Yeah, and there's nothing pressing for us to do that. And I, I did my job of cycling it along and I'm sorry that I. And I did my job of cycling it along, and I'm sorry that I haven't reviewed it, but do not feel any pressure to sign this thing today. We don't benefit one way or the other.
Yeah, I don't.
I don't either. I do have a question, though. Were we an original signature?
I have no idea.
Okay, so do we need a motion to table this?
I would think that if we did sign it, that this document would exist somewhere in the town office.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good assumption.
I don't ever remember us, not that I was there all the time, but I don't ever remember us as either a selectman or interim administrator ever entering into something like this. Although, having said that, you'll probably pull something out and have my name on it.
Yeah, and I'll get, I'll get some better information for your, the fifth is your next meeting, so I'll have some better clarity on it. Again, no one's chomping at the bit. You can leave it. You can table it. You can do whatever you want with it. It's not.
I move we table it for the next meeting.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye, sphere.
Aye, Goddio.
Aye, Wrights. All right, update on grant reimbursements?
So the fishing for energy, which was the stump-dump lobster trap, that's been submitted. That was submitted early last week. Same with the keep-me-healthy grant monies and engineering reimbursements for island roads. So of the outstanding grant reimbursements that we have, the only one that's still outstanding as far as submission is the FEMA one. Last week, John and I started working on that, and we pulled in main emergency management. And they had done another extension, and John, please correct anything wrong that I say. They had done another extension, and so said that there was no need at this time for us to like scramble, scramble, scramble and get it submitted. It's still 100%. It's still going on for the foreseeable future. We'd still like to get it submitted before the end of the year so that we at least have that warm and fuzzy when we talk with Mindy about reimbursement monies that they get allocated to 2020. I finally just got an email back from Mindy that might provide some clarity on this, but it came in during this meeting, so I just haven't read it.
Yeah, she also said that, well, a couple of things. She said that the deadline was extended if the stimulus bill was passed, and I believe it passed. I believe Trump's now signed that. I thought I read that this morning.
He did yesterday.
Okay, so I was a little worried when that didn't happen, but she also said she was going to set up. She said she urged us to wait, putting it together until we had a phone conversation with someone that she was going to set us up with this week to help us figure it out.
And she's on my to-do list because I haven't received, there's like a person who helps towns do these things and helps save you time. So I'll ping her again on that, John, because I haven't gotten anything from her.
I offered to help Owen enter some data, and it is kind of a complicated, tedious process, so. Or at least we think it is. So we're kind of, I guess we're kind of waiting for this call. It's supposed to happen sometime this week.
So the she that you're referring to is Mindy?
No, her name is Naomi Pelty, and she's main emergency management. She is the go-to kind of FEMA representative in Maine.
Yeah, me, actually, Mema, I misspoke. She was very helpful, and she was very, and she urged us to wait until this person helped us, because she said a lot of towns have spun their wheels and done things they didn't need to do, and, you know, and. And there was an issue about whether, whether this time could be eligible for reimbursement if it wasn't true overtime. She wasn't sure about that, so that could be a problem for us.
Speaking specifically to the OIC, and our argument is, no individual went overtime, but our budget went overtime because we did not anticipate this position. It's been required because of COVID.
And then Owen.
You mean.
Explain, Owen explained to her that he was aware of other towns that had submitted, were in similar situations, and had submitted, if you will, extra costs that weren't technically overtime, you know. And what I mean by overtime is, you know, over 40 hours in a week.
Okay, that was, I was looking for that clarification. So I would think that it would be unusual for us to have an OIC that puts in over 40 hours in a week, unless it's, well, not even a, or, you know, because she doesn't put in 40 hours a week working here.
That's the point. That's okay.
Yeah, and we're.
She wasn't certain that this would be an eligible cost, but she also said, I'm not the expert on that.
All right. Did we nail that down? Okay. Performance award for town employee. So the recommendation is, and Jerry supports this, is for Dana Callahan for extra work and rigor in taking on the added responsibilities of being the expanded gatekeeper keeper. And the number of other things that he's done over the past year. And I apologize, I should have written this up just for form's sake, but Jerry and I didn't have the discussion. We support some recommendation.
Well, I know the collection of the fishing gear, you know, was additional workload for him, and I know he stepped up to that. That's things that I'm familiar with. He also did some repair and work, you know, again, during his normal working hours, but beyond the scope of his normal job that I'm aware of. So I would support a performance award for him.
I can't think of anybody who's more deserving. He's been, he's been so reliable for so many years. And I would, if we were going to give this to anybody, I would, I would give it to Dana. I am going to vote against it again, just like I did on the other two, because I don't support the concept. And I will explain that to Dana, just like I did to Anna and Phil. But if we are going to do it, I can't think of anybody more deserving.
Okay.
You aren't going to do it, John. Why don't you support it, for Christ's sake?
As I said, I don't support the concept.
Dollar amount.
Jan, you have a subjective dollar amount. Jerry and I did.
Yeah, I would make, I would move that we recognize an award for Dana in the amount of $500.
Okay, I'll second that motion. And as part of discussion, John, I certainly will agree in the first part of next year to revisit the concept.
Well, we do it as part of the budget cycle each year.
Anyway.
The discussion we have with the budget committee, so it'll come around.
Okay, any discussion? No, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Goddio, aye.
Wrights, aye. All opposed?
Sphere.
Right, old business. I don't really even know where to start with the land and water conservation stuff. There was a lot of information pushed out in your packets about it. I, a good opportunity. I, John, can you help me kind of like, where do we even start with this?
Well, I'm kind of with you. I have come up with a couple of questions since we had this meeting. One is, how many parking spaces are required? Because I think we need to get that from Doug. That wasn't clear. And also, what was my other question? Oh, my other question is, is the 30,000, is that a firm number for paving, or is that just a rough estimate?
Paving?
Yeah, the resurfacing. Wasn't it 30,000?
Twenty thousand.
Well, how come, I thought it was a 50-50 match.
It is, and we put 10 in.
Right. Is the 20,000?
Yep, that was a quote. I don't know if that quote has changed. Usually, they're, you know, good for 30 days or whatever. But that was a quote provided by a professional resurfacing organization. We had two different quotes. One was just over 20,000. One was just at 20,000. They were both within a couple hundred of each other.
Okay, okay. Well, it was a very good meeting. I think, I don't want to just regurgitate what I wrote in the summary, but if we're going to move ahead with this, we definitely need to deal with the parking and the ADA issue and the gate. Moving the gate, because it has to be vehicle accessible from a public way. I think moving the gate, I don't think is a huge deal. I don't know if those posts are poured in concrete or not. And I, but Jerry might know that. So I think the first thing we need to do is pin down what these costs are, you know, moving the gate, creating the parking area. I think we're all set with the fence on the ADA, because the gates are 40, they're four feet wide. And I believe ADA requirements are 36 inches. So that's well over, over that. And we need to create a couple of little paths to the gates. But if we move the parking lot to the other, to the side where the tennis courts are, because originally in '73, it depicted it across the street, and looking at the trees there, I don't think it was ever built. There's some pretty good-sized trees there. Those paths should be relatively small, and they don't have to be paved. As a matter of fact, Doug from the state recommended that we don't pave them, because the pavement heaves and breaks up, and then you got a maintenance problem. You're better off just to have a compacted gravel, and that meets the ADA requirements. So I think the first thing we need to do is pin down these costs, and because we can't, they're not going to give us the funds for the resurfacing if we don't do the other items first or simultaneously. So it strikes me that what we need to do is attempt to pin down these costs and then see if we can raise some money somehow, or get some in-kind donations to undertake some of these activities. There was that whole discussion about lighting, but I think personally, I think if we go down that route, we're going to miss this March submission deadline, and we won't get this done this summer. And that was Doug's take on it, too.
So the, this, this is, we have scope creep in this thing, but it's because of compliance, correct?
We're technically out of compliance right now.
Right, okay, that's.
I mean, we don't have to do the resurfacing, but we technically should have the parking area and the, and the gate not where it is.
So that's the, that's a condition for the grant, is that we bring everything else into compliance?
Well, it is, although we're technically, we technically are out of compliance with the '73 grant.
With it, right.
Now, he didn't say they were going to come down and shoot us.
And I mean.
I wonder, I wonder if, if we do it all, if we do the resurfacing ourselves.
Don't. I mean, and normally, you can get away with a lot. When you're talking about these playing surfaces, it's a really poor idea to try to get to that level of specificity with folks that are typically doing roads.
No, no, no.
He meant funding it.
I didn't mean, I meant funding themselves.
Okay.
Passing my grant. But I guess I look at that as, as just making sure that we would consider that, that's an item. I'm not proposing that we go that route. Remember that, for whatever reason, this was perhaps the most controversial or much discussed item at the last town meeting, even though it was only $10,000. So anyhow, what do you, what do you recommend in terms of go-forward, John?
Well, I said, I think the first thing we need to do is, is get prices so we know what we need to fundraise. And if we can't fundraise it quickly, then I, my personal feeling is, we need to move ahead with those items first and then continue to, and use some of the 10,000 that we've already raised, and then try to continue to fundraise so we can complete the surfacing. Or go back to town meeting in June for a little extra money for the surfacing. But I don't think we want to miss this March deadline, or we're going to lose a whole other year again.
Right.
So I, and I think we may need to make a decision on the lighting. My personal feeling is, and I think others, or, you know, we can, it doesn't hurt to get those numbers, but I think my feeling and Rich's feeling, and I think Penny, people sitting on that call, was the lighting is just going to, it's going to be very expensive and throw a wrinkle in this. Doug did say that lighting a basketball court is a whole different kettle of fish than lighting for a tennis court. And I assume that's because of the size and the speed of the ball. But, so anyways, that would be, yeah, and, you know, I think we need to talk to Jerry, maybe Jimmy Calleck. I don't know if there's some other local contractors that could help us move the gate.
Yep, so I, you know, had talked with Jimmy when we had submitted this initially, because I thought it was going to be a phase two. I said, I'm looking for a roundabout numbers, not specificity. We talked about that gate and what it was set in. He also did not feel it was going to be difficult. He put a, you know, girth strap on it, and you pull him right out. So Jimmy should be connecting with me in the next couple of days. I talked with him last week. So he'll come in, and he'll be able to give us, so by your January 5th meeting, I have good confidence that I can have, I mean, we can get additional quotes, and, you know, we'll end up having to go out to RFP anyway. But at least to have good, solid numbers, Jimmy should provide those by your January 5th meeting. We should have the lighting numbers by your January 5th meeting. And what I can do also is touch base with Doug and clarify number of parking spaces so that we're not, you know, getting to a number of seven when he wants us to get to a number of nine or whatever. So by your January 5th meeting, you should have some, some good knowledge. I agree, the lighting, especially now looking at that firm's website, and getting a little bit of feedback from the guys looking at the picture anyway, that it might grow bigger than, than just like a good floodlight. I think, you know, like John recounted from Doug, the lighting specifications are way different. But we don't know until I get some numbers back from them. So basically, it's, a lot better information will be provided to you all by January 5th. The big thing, I think, to just stress is, you know, it did seem like a very good opportunity for us to roll some of these things, and we'll have good numbers on cost. We're really constrained by how much fundraising can happen between now and submission date based on those costs. Not so much getting, getting the estimates. That'll be not a Herculean task. We should have those shortly. But then getting together a group of people to do fundraising, or figuring out how, you know, how the in-kind gets added up with landscape architects and construction firms and a project manager, and seeing if some of that can be in-kind. But as far as getting our arms wrapped around what it, what it would cost and what it would look like, we should have good information by your next meeting.
Yeah, and that's a key point. The in-kind services, the value of that can serve as match. So if we can talk Jimmy, George Hall, say, into giving us, you know, a couple of loads of gravel at their cost, you know, not, you know what I'm saying? That that difference can, between what would be the arm's length cost and the cost they gave it to us can be counted as match, so. Or if we can talk Jerry Grissin into moving the gate, I don't know.
Yeah, I would think Jerry could move that gate easily, maybe with somebody his grandson or even me.
Yeah, I, I would think Jerry could move that gate easily, maybe with somebody his grandson or even me, you know, helping him. You can leave that out with a backhoe and just dig the holes and, you know, move it. That's, that's a, that's not that difficult.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, as you said, John, we've got ten grand in the budget now. I don't see any problem with going ahead and spending portion of that if we need to, you know, particularly to bring ourselves in compliance with the last grant we got. And, uh, and then take it from there. It can go before the town even again. You know, we can try and fundraise it, we can, we can solicit the town for it again, or, you know, we'll see.
The trouble is, we have to detail where this match is coming from in that March submission.
And that, that's something, I'm not saying Doug's wrong. I was a little confused about that. I, I've seen, I thought anyway, the accepting of a grant application, and them accepting that, even though the funding hasn't been approved, I almost feel like that's what we did last year, and the only reason that we actually hit the timeline right was because everything got delayed. But basically, we, we indicated the budget committee and the select board support this. We're gonna propose it at town meeting. It's in a little while, can you accept our grant application even, and I'll let you know if the citizens approve the funding, and it can be contingent on that. But Doug seemed to shoot that down in our meeting.
Yeah, and I think because the grant is approved at the state level, they're just submitting it to the PAC service for final approval, is my, was my understanding.
And I think what makes it different is this is not a re-submission of a new grant. And this would be a, an amendment to our existing, which means we can't kind of have a contingent on town meeting, because I'm pretty sure that's what we did last time. We submitted our grant, having not gotten the approval yet, but I indicated, select board, budget committee supported it. It's going to the citizens, and I'll let you know. And then everything got delayed, so I was able to tell them, hey, it got approved at town meeting. Um, but that's the difference between the last time and this time.
Yeah. And Jan, I agree with you. I just, I am, I am hesitant. It seems so we always go to Jerry when we need something like this.
Yeah.
And I'd like to get some, some other folks in town.
You should give Jerry the opportunity to say no, because we're gonna face.
But you know Jerry, he won't say, he won't say no.
Um, and then just other things to think about a- as we put this all together. We didn't account for any of Ed Modell's time, uh, when we did the original grant submission. Now where it might potentially be expanding, taking in and bolting on a professional wage for Ed Modell's assistance in the grant and, you know, assistance from folks. If we're getting to a place where we're going beyond the approved ten thousand or twenty thousand in total, we really should start keeping track of any outside assistance, because that can all be rolled into in-kind. If Ed did ten hours of work on the grant at a hundred dollars an hour, there's a thousand dollars of in-kind right there from him.
Well, I, I also think your time should be tracked. You should be keeping a log of your time, because that could potentially be matched.
Potentially, it only gets funny when, when we get to salary. I've been trying to do that with some of the other stuff too. Under salary, they get funny about it.
Typically, typically, costs to prepare grant application are not, um, eligible. That's been my experience.
I think that you're probably right. I'm just, it was raising the general, at this point in time, anything that we can keep track of that might go towards in-kind would be a smart thing. It's, it's just a different scenario than when it was twenty thousand, ten thousand, everything lined up. We didn't need to account for that stuff.
Exactly, exactly. But if Jimmy Calick comes down and, you know, provides an estimate, and if he normally charges for that estimate, which he probably doesn't, that's another example, I think, if he does.
Yep.
So.
All right, so Owen, do you know what your go-to is here for January?
My go-to, continue to grab, uh, numbers, pull them together so that you have, uh, better understanding on your January fifth. And then the only other one that I have is, is confirming the number of parking spaces we would need. Is there more than that?
All right. No, I just want to make sure that, uh, we get teed up.
Um.
All right, item C, delinquent, I'm sorry, John.
Yeah, no, that's it. Okay, yeah. Good.
Uh, personal property tax, please.
Yeah, my apologies for getting that a little bit late. It took me a minute to find it in the stack of the sign, but yes, the, the sprucehead pizza did sign for the certified letter. That was kind of one of the remaining questions.
Well, what about the other one?
I think everyone else is paid up.
Hoggie paid?
That's the same guy, I think.
No, no, Hoggie, you still own, um.
Russ Montgomery?
Yeah, Russell Montgomery.
That was the one I included in your packet, wasn't it?
You said two hadn't paid.
You sent us spruce head pizza.
Yeah, you sent us spruce head pizza.
Oh, well, then I'm just, I got myself confused. I thought we were talking about the same person.
No, there's two of them outstanding. So did his letter, did Russell's letter come back unsigned for?
Well, I didn't, I didn't look for that one, because I thought we were talking about spruce head pizza. Oh, yeah, that was my, I thought, I thought that I had accomplished the task, and that that was just the, that one spruce head pizza. I can get that to you. Uh, it's in a stack over in the office.
Um, could you take care of that this afternoon?
Yeah, you know what, actually, because I, I blank out when you all do your executive session, so I can have that stuff, and then when we, you go to do, I can give you an update then.
Good, because I'd like to move forward with this, and it seems like.
No, I know that you did, and I really thought that I had provided the last little bit that you needed, so sorry about that. I'll get it to you, though, by the end of your executive session.
Okay, all right, correspondence.
What about the checking, finalize the checking policy? You skipped that.
Oh, I glossed over that, I'm sorry. Um, everybody read it? I still, it's still not a hundred percent clear to me when, what is allowable or not. And I, the only thing that, um, um, that causes me not to want to be over specific in the document is the fact that, um, it's subject to the audit anyway. And we do have some limits and controls. Anybody else?
Question, the what is allowed? I mean, I guess I kind of view this as anything not taxpayer funded.
Well, I mean, the whole idea of donations come to the town, and we're making exceptions to that in this, um, which is fine, it's just that we're not specific about what those exceptions are.
I think we've got the right oversight in it, though, now.
Yeah, I, that's, that's right. I'm hoping that you guys will say that.
Yeah.
Well, I know where you're coming from. Um, I guess, to be honest with you, completely honest with you, I, I don't like the idea of having separate checking accounts, but if, if we're gonna, then I think we need to have some policy that kind of controls them or oversees them, and I'm happy with what we have here. I mean, in a perfect world, I would know, if you want money, you gotta go through the town, just warrant dispersal process.
Um, this is, this is a whole lot better than what we used to do, John.
Yeah.
Look at that.
Oh, yeah, oh, a lot better. I believe me, I know all about this subject.
And we've still got people making donations, and, and they want to make the donation specific to the department.
Right, and they can do that.
Yeah.
And they can, you know, you could, we, and they can do that. That's not a problem, and it still could go through the town books, but I, I, but I thought we were, didn't want to go that route, so I think we need to have a policy, um, like this, um, governing that, you know, again, in a perfect world, it wouldn't be my first choice, but so I'm ready to approve it.
Maybe we'd want to call these, instead of, instead of the title being special checking accounts for town departments, maybe we want to call them donation accounts. So that it's clear that this is money, you know, donated for those departments.
That's a good point, because um, that way it's clear that, um, the taxpayers are not funding these things.
Yeah, sp- special checking makes it sound special, I guess, and.
Yeah.
Just a couple of suggestions. You can go through and strike checking any place that you want. Or I think you could get to that purpose in that first paragraph that says purpose by just adding some additional language right at the end. So the purpose of this policy is to establish a process for the creation, use, accounting of special town checking or savings accounts maintained by the town department heads and populated by non-taxpayer funds. Or something, yeah, something bolt on to the end there that specifically says donations or non-tax appropriated or however.
Yep.
Actually, now that I look at this too, I, I, didn't we agree to strike savings?
Yes, we did.
Yeah, I, when, Owen, when you asked me, I.
Yep.
My apologies.
I was at home when I was trying to finish this up, and my notes were at the office, and so I remembered that we had upped it to five hundred. There was some cleanup, and I called John to try to remember what I was forgetting, so I apologize that, that that wasn't struck.
No, that was my fault. I forgot about that. Um, I don't know, I, I kind of like the checking, because I think that's specific to what we're trying to do here.
Yeah, I don't mind, I don't, wouldn't mind including it down in the first paragraph, but I just thought the title would be better. You know, where we could talk about the purpose of this policy is to establish a process for the creation and use of accounting of donated dollars, or donated, um, you know, I had it, now I lost it.
Of monies donated.
Donation accounts is what I want to call them. You know, establishment of, of checking services for donation accounts or something like that.
Well, where this isn't like a super pressing thing, Jan, did you want to spend just a little bit of time and send this out? Because no one's chomping at the bit, and we can finalize this January fifth if you wanted.
Yeah, I'm glad to take it. If you want to send me where we are with this draft that you've got.
Yep, it's this, yes, I'll strike out the, or savings, that was the, the striking out savings accounts, but I'll go and, um, and send that to you, uh, once we're done.
Yeah, don't change anything on it. Just send it to me as it is on this paper, please.
Okay, yep.
All right. And, and, and I'm supportive of changing the title.
Yeah, I'll, I'll keep in there that it's clear that we're talking about checking accounts.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's where the money comes from.
Yeah.
Um, okay. Uh, correspondence. Um, Owen, um, are any of the correspondents that we're about to dis- discuss on the YouTube? Koffel and Bullet?
No.
All right, well, so let me deal with Koffel's, uh, demand from last week, uh, that we turn over to him any, any documentation that we, that's been exchanged between, uh, Owen and MMA Legal and Walter and MMA Legal. And, um, I've told him once before that, uh, I will not deal with him over email in any other forum than a public meeting at which you two are in attendance. So I'm not responding to any of his mails, and, um, so that's why we're here today. Um, and, um, I gave some thought to, uh, telling him to follow me on this, and then taking, uh, I don't know, five or ten years to give him the sad news that, unfortunately, there is no written conversation between me and MMA Legal for me to give him. But you could just put in the minutes of the meeting, Owen, that there are no, uh, written, written documentation, transmittals between me and MMA Legal on the subject of encumbrance, and I actually don't even use that term. Um, so that should satisfy him, um, on that, on that score. Um, and I personally am not going to go into the Sarah Bullet, um, um, mail until she's actually on one of these, uh, meetings, uh, because I found that condescending and insulting beyond belief, and I'm gonna have some strong words to say about it when, uh, uh, she next appears at one of our meetings. So those are my pre-New Year's thought on these subjects. John?
Um, I would like to see us put correspondence on as a standing agenda item. Um, we have gotten, I've been thinking, actually, before these last two emails, I've been thinking quite a bit about this. We get several emails that are addressed to the board, and we really can't respond to them, um, as a board without discussing them in a meeting. Um.
Agreed.
And I feel like we, we need to, in the old days, when it came in snail mail, we, you know, we, we always took a letter in and at least acknowledged that it came in. Um, and sometimes responded, and sometimes it didn't. And I think we need to do that now, um, with email. And then.
I totally agree.
Okay, so, okay, so we can.
Yeah.
All right, so.
In fact, I would go so far, John, is to say that Owen ought to have a standard response.
Yes, that's exactly where I was going.
Okay. We're thinking the same way, then. I, I think we should have it discussed at the meeting, so they see that we've addressed it. And we, and we consciously decide whether we'll respond or, or just acknowledge it. And then in the interim, when you receive it, Owen, or we receive it, and we immediately go back with a candid response, saying that this issue will be addressed at the next, you know, under correspondence that they next, uh, regularly scheduled select board.
And, and Owen, I would also suggest, but I'll see if the board members agree with me, that, um, when the mail is directed to you and us, that the response be that we, as a group, will take this up at the next meeting, and that you do not respond independently of us.
Right. Even for clarification or edification or any of the just, don't say any, other than that we'll discuss it at the next meeting.
Now, I, I would agree with that if it's addressed to us, if it's CC'd to us, but mailed to Owen, I don't agree with that.
I, I think that that's a legitimate distinction, and that's, I would have made it that way.
Yeah, um, and also, I, 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 in the response, the, the response, I'm not sure we want to say that this issue will be taken up. I, I, I think it should be even simpler, because we may not want to take up the issue. We may just want to thank you for your correspondence. It'll be on the agenda under correspondence at the next select one.
Right, it'll, it'll be considered, we'll read it.
Yeah, whatever, exactly. Uh, okay, so that, so that was one thing. In terms of Mr. Koffel's, um, um, correspondence, uh, oh, it's my understanding, Owen, that you had no written communication with MMA either, is that correct?
No, I do.
Oh, you do? Well, that is, that is a public document.
And what is it? Uh, what is your written communication, and do we have it? And if not, we want it.
So the communication was, I knew that you had had a conversation with an attorney, but I didn't have any information to provide in the packet, so I asked, and you said, there's no emails that you had. So I reached back out to MMA with the same question. I got a different attorney. Uh, we had a phone conversation where I tried to explain what we were dealing with here. The email correspondence is basically her sending me an email last week saying, hey, still waiting for the, you know, the, the, the results from, you know, your June town meeting and that vote, and some of the, because the, she, the amount of detail on how the Northern Borders money got approved, under what conditions. She wanted to see that, like, what was on the warrant at town meeting, what, how that was disposed, what our contract with, with Northern Borders looked like, what's in that contract specification, how did all, what's in our reserve accounts, because, and it became this very, very, like, you are asking for a ton of information for a really simple question, which is, can we just hold funds approved at town meeting?
Right, so, um, and, um, I think I sent you an email earlier today.
Yep.
Um, this is moot. Um, and all of that kind of stuff, um, if, if, or, if it were I, in that back and forth with them, I'd have said, uh, this is way beyond what I expect, want, and care about from MMA. It's all, this is all, these are all items that I will take to the lawyer that I pay to do this work, not the free lawyer. Um, in terms of the exchange of those documents, so, um, what, what mail correspondence do you have back and forth with her? Um, send them to us and, um, um, we figure out what to give to, uh, to the extent that they're public domain, we give them to Coffel, but no more. Uh, we don't need her for anything right now.
Yep.
Yeah, I think any, I think by definition, any correspondence with MMA Legal is a public document on MMA's side. I'm almost positive.
Yeah, well, that's what they said, uh, when you, when you write, when you write the request.
Because they're not, yeah. So, I mean, I, I think we should just, if there is written correspondence, we should give it to John. There's nothing, nothing to hide here.
No, and the only reason, with it being kind of an ongoing discussion, I just like to continuously filter out to him a couple of emails here and a couple of emails there in, in, in real time as he requested. Um, that seemed to be a bit of a stretch for me. I mean, yes, these are all FOA documents. And typically, if there's a public document that is really easy for me to just grab and send out, and I did it just like I did in that response to Mr. Coffel. There were good documents. I had them in my email. It answered some of his questions. And so I've shipped him a lot of information. Like, the only thing that I've, o- over the course of months and months and months and all of this conversation, John's asked for documentation, what does our grant agreement with Northern Borders look like? What's the ongoing engineering services with Gartley and Dorsky? They're just public documents. I send them to them. Um, with one specifically, it was an ongoing, haven't been resolved. And there's no good clarification in any of the emails from MMA Legal. It's her asking for supplemental information. Uh, but yeah, I'll pull all that and I'll get that to you all. Um, there is a question on YouTube. So Maureen Spencer said that she likes the idea of a donation account or donation accounts, um, makes it clear upfront. And then she also asked a question, so mail doesn't get put under public comment? Um, as far as when I receive things in mail that came to the office or email that says specifically, I want this as public comment because I'm not going to be available, those get provided to the board or like I'll ship them off to someone who'll get read. I think Jeff's, Jeff Northgraves on this call has read items or some other people have read them for Jeff or, um, so public comment is a little bit different than correspondence. So, uh, if I get something from an individual for the board, uh, I, I will get that to them in their packets typically under correspondence. So, uh, for Maureen, I am not acting as, as a filter and saying the board should not be getting this information and withholding it from them if it comes in snail mail.
Can you, can you tell, tell me what you just said?
You want, so mail doesn't get put under public comment was her question. And mail to the board unless it says this is for public comment would not get put under public comment. It would get put under correspondence. Uh, like we've been talking about. I think Maureen was just asking for a clarifying. She, she wanted to know if she mailed something to the town office and it said to the select board, am I, will that get provided to the board, uh, under public comment? And it wouldn't necessarily under public comment unless you specified. It would just go under correspondence.
That sounds reasonable to me.
Yeah, Jeff?
Yeah, real quick on going back one item. I, I think anybody who's requesting information that involves a lawyer that the town is requesting information from should go as a FOA request and it should be reviewed by an attorney. Because there are many cases where MMA's legal advice is protected and in fact, may not be just protected. Is, it is illegal to release that publicly. So, so I, if anybody's requesting any information where the town is asking for information from legal, regardless of what legal or who legal or who the attorney is, it should go as a formal FOA request and the town should refer it to their lawyer to determine whether or not it is releasable under FOA.
Good suggestion, especially.
That's not my understanding. That's not my understanding, Jeff. My understanding is that correspondence for MMA Legal is, is on their end in the public domain. I think, I think we should call...
Well, it, it may be under their end and so somebody would have to go to MMA and request a FOA for that information. But on our end, if we are requesting any kind of a determination from lawyers, regardless of who the lawyer is or where the lawyer is or what the purpose of that correspondence is, it could be protected and not just protected, but it could be covered under the area of things you are not allowed to release to the public. So, so I would, I would do it as a FOA request. I would give it to your attorney, say, this is what they're requesting. Your attorney says, yes, release it or no, don't release it or redax the information. You, you can't just release any information, anything that you get from a lawyer, regardless of the source, regardless of the, who it is.
And I believe that's the safest approach in terms of protecting us and, um, MMA does say on their website, when you, when you log one of these requests, that written communications between me, in this case, at them, um, can be in the public domain.
Can be.
Can be.
Can be.
I do believe it's can, but I will verify that. Um, and that, and you note that they say, if the issue is sensitive, call us. Uh, because conversations are not, um, are protected, um, I believe, or have a different, uh, a different viewpoint.
No, they're just not, they just, you can't follow a conversation.
Right. You, um, exactly, unless it's recorded, of course. Owen, yes?
So I'm looking at the email correspondence back and forth on this exact topic. And the footer from the staff attorney from MMA Legal Services Department, the footer in her email reads, "This email message, including any attachment, is for the sole use of the intended recipient or recipients and may contain confidential and privileged information. Any unauthorized review, disclosure or distribution is prohibited. If you are not the intended recipient, please contact the sender by reply email and destroy all copies of the original message. Thank you."
Ah, that's interesting. Since I don't deal with them over email, that was...
And, and the reason they want, to be frank, the reason they want you to call them is because they can give you their opinion over the phone. They have to give you their policy in writing. And there's a, there is many times there's a difference.
Yeah.
But, but I think in the case we're dealing with here, this, there's nothing, there's no reason not to give this to John Coffel.
And, and I, and I don't know anything about that issue. All, all I'm saying is, as a general practice, if you are forwarding correspondence from a lawyer, you need to do it as a FOA and have your lawyer review it to ensure that you aren't stepping on anybody's toes.
Well, this is really a discussion about accounting. I, I personally have no issue whatsoever releasing it to John, but, and I think we should, but...
Yeah, and I, I, so, I also, I...
What would be released?
Nothing, there's, there's nothing in those emails that are privileged. But I do think that Jeff's point still stands that it's not us on this call that have the knowledge to make that, like, yeah, nine times out of 10, it's pretty clear. You're like, oh, we're just talking about accounting. This is not someone's reputation. This is not, you know, medical stuff. This is those things that could become redacted or privileged or whatever. Generally speaking, Jeff is correct, but also generally speaking, John is correct. Nine times out of 10, it's not privileged information and should just be released. But like where, you know, how quickly, how timely, how fast, that's where you start to get into FOA stuff. And it's like, look, I'll get it to you as soon as I can, but you demanding all this stuff of me, go the FOA route. Send me a FOA request and we'll go, we'll go from there. That, but that's, and that's basically what I told John Coffel.
So, um, all right, what, what are you going to send him? Send it to us before you send it to him.
I already did. I forwarded it to you so that you could also see the footer on there. As you'll see in that email exchange, it's a lot of, I'm a little confused. I need some more information. It sounds like you're asking about this. And then uh, she asked for some follow-up information, saying, I haven't received follow-up information. And at that point, you all had like voted or were about to vote or, and I moved on.
So either, uh, what you should do, and I think is close the loop with her and say, uh, thank you very much, but we need, uh, we've moved on from this issue or something like that.
Yeah, and we'll do it with our, with our town attorney.
Something like that.
If need be, yeah.
I don't think we need to go there. I don't want to be spending money.
I said, if need be, if need be, there was a comma. There was a comma.
This is, this is a moot issue. We've already acted. It's over. It's, we're talking about a minor accounting issue here.
I agree.
We've blown up into a...
I mean, and really, I mean...
John, you, 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 I...
You all could have let it roll into surplus on the 31st.
If you said that, what? I didn't hear you.
I was just saying, this is, this is a very minor, I mean, like, without carrying it forward, you could have let it roll into surplus on the 31st and then on January 1st, you know, taking it out of surplus with your powers. There's all kinds of different ways, like, I didn't understand why the attorney was complicating it as much as they were.
Okay, I think we chewed it.
Uh, on the, on the, on the next correspondence, are we ready to move on?
Yes.
Um, I, um, am I correct, Owen, that the agenda did not get sent out on the listserv?
Yeah, not on the listserv, nope.
And was there a reason why that didn't happen?
Um, I...
I mean, you typically do. And you said in the email, when you corrected, um, in one of your emails that, no, the first email, when you had the wrong time, you said the agenda would be sent to you. So I assume that was your plan.
Um, yes, that's what I said, then that was my error. Typically, I'll say the agenda will be posted prior to the meeting. And then the agenda gets posted onto the calendar under that meeting like it is right now.
Yeah.
Um, I, if, if, I have sent out meeting agendas before, absolutely, and I probably should be doing that, absolutely. Uh, with this meeting specifically, it was noticed last week, beginning of last week. Hard copy agendas went up. Hard copies were changed out and swapped out for the most part. They were put at Spruce Head, at the Maritime Farms at 131, at the Gig Store, at the Town Office. I didn't change the sandwich board for the new date. The website had December 28th, starting at 10:00 AM, and then the calendar had the agenda on it. So like, I understand that people want information in a timely manner.
Don't belabor it, Owen. Don't belabor it.
Yeah.
The, the listserv is a nice tool and I think that, and, and then we should put it on there. But I think the place it has to be is on the, on the town webpage. And it has to be there within a certain amount of days. And that's where people should always go. You know, the listserv is a nice tool, but people come and go from that listserv. And I don't want that to become the driving, uh, you know, and I think that's where, you know, that email was kind of out of line because I think that, you know, you got to go to the right place to find it. And if it's not there, then there's a valid complaint. But...
I, I disagree somewhat. I'm, I think when the listserv send, when Owen sends out something on the, on the listserv and says the agenda will be sent out, and then it isn't, that's a problem. I think once we create an expectation, then we need to live with that expectation.
Well, that, yeah, you're, you're very right, but let's, you know, this is a classic example, if I can quote my longstanding colleague, Ed Gaudio, of no good deed goes unpunished.
I understand.
This listserv didn't exist until Owen invented it a year ago. And now every time a mistake is made, we hear about it from people that we never hear from on anything else. And it really annoys me. And I'm about to say, don't put anything on the listserv. Let everybody go down to the post office.
I don't think it should become the seminal document. It shouldn't drive this thing. Because there's a whole lot of people, I mean, there's how many? 200 on the listserv maybe? And there's 1,500 taxpayers. So why should those 200 have access to things that, you know, the other, you know, 1,300 don't? Whereas if you say it's on the webpage, then everybody knows they got to go there. And if they don't have a webpage, they know they got to go to the post office or the Gig Store and see it.
But we, my point is, we need to be consistent. If we're going to send out some agendas on the listserv, then we need to send them all out. If we don't want to send out agendas on the listserv, then don't send out any. I think once you create an expectation that it's going to be at a certain place, then we need to stick with that.
I, I would agree, but I also think that's a nice tool.
I agree. It's way above the bar. We don't even need to publish an agenda. All we need to do is publish it to the meeting. But, um, but I also think we should update the board out front. Um, you know, that, that board out front still says December 5th or whenever we met again. And, and, and I, I agree with you. I think that email, um, from Sarah was, was quite offensive and, and I don't care. I think people's time is equally valuable, whether they're high caliber or not. Um, and, uh, but I, but I do think that we also have a responsibility and we know there's a, there's a heightened sensitivity around this island road issue right now. And I think we need to be cognizant of that.
I would just also throw, we, we are not discussing island road at all. So the sense...
I understand that, but because they didn't have the agenda, they didn't know that.
Yeah.
Well, really, I mean, how many times have we told them that when we're going to discuss island road, we'll do it in this independent meeting just with those people because they're so special? Because they're all high caliber or the rest of them are just low caliber.
I don't, I don't want to go there, Walter. I don't agree with that.
Well, you know, um, like I said, that mail was offensive and, um, and condescending. And I'm going to call her out when next we meet.
Well, I think...
I don't, because I don't take that kind of crap from anybody, John.
All right, well, yeah, we, we disagree then.
Yeah, we can disagree.
Yeah.
But I will, um, I will try to obviously be better about, um, getting some of this information pushed out. And then if the board comes to resolution on like a best practices for this position, um, you know, I will continue to try to do whatever makes the most sense. Um, so were there any other items under correspondence? And I'll have that be a perpetual one on the agenda going forward. Um, it's sometimes when there was no correspondence, I was, I would delete it. And so apologies if it's not being consistent, but we'll just have correspondence and then none if there is none.
This is Sandra. Uh, on correspondence, when you do the acknowledgement letter, uh, I think you were talking about saying this will be considered by the board under correspondence at the next board meeting. And I would use a different term. I think like brought to the attention of the board or of something like that. It does not hold out the promise that you're going to actually give it consideration or action.
Reviewed? How's, how's reviewed?
Not even reviewed, just brought to the attention of.
Okay, all right.
I, that was my point. I agree. You don't want to give people the expectation that we're going to read it or whatever. I mean...
Exactly, exactly.
Good advice. I have a piece, of course. Owen, you got more?
Uh, Penny had a comment on YouTube, but it can, I'll, I'll bring it up whenever you're done.
Well, I just, a piece of correspondence, more of a comment, but I, I think I mentioned last time we met about, uh, Thomason put out something, you know, it was in the paper about the new LED street lighting. And they wanted public comment back. I went on their website. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at the ThomasonMaine.gov website, but they, uh, they basically have got a letter to the public, which I liked. And I thought you might want to think about something similar. Uh, it's basic, I won't read it to you, but it basically talks about what they did with the lighting. You know, the fact that the lighting is going to be on, uh, a few minutes after sunset... You know, the fact that the lighting is going to be on a few minutes after sunset at full brightness from 11:00 PM to, to, or from sunset until 11:00 PM, then 11:00 PM it goes to half brightness. And oh, by the way, community, let us know what you think about that. And then they put a web, a email in there for, for John Fancy, who is, I guess, their public works guy. Let me know what you think. I, you know, if, if you get a chance, go on their website and just take a look at it because I think it would be nice for us to do something similar to our town residents about that lighting and, and give them an opportunity to give us some feedback on it. And I don't know if with the smart controls, Owen, if we've actually set it up to be at full brightness from sunset till 11:00 PM, for example, and then going down to half brightness. But, you know, those are things that we probably should consider. Enough said on it, I don't want to belabor it, I just want to point it out was there.
And I'll definitely look it over because we've already had some inquiries and I've had to like do information sharing with office folks about who is now, or what is now whose responsibility.
Yeah.
And I think that should also be included, you know, if, you know, these lights are now the responsibility of the town, so contact us, et cetera.
Yeah, we'll read that letter and you'll see what I'm doing.
Awesome, thank you for that. Penny's comment was, "I would like to see agendas added to the minutes tab on the homepage of the town website." And I, I mean, all good, it's, it's one of the difficulties when someone raises, what is a good idea? I mean, under minutes, sure, one person could make the assumption agendas are going to be there. That's a really good thing that we can and should be doing. You know, it, the, the question, kind of what Jan and John and Walter were kind of, you know, hashing out a little bit is, at what point have we gone so far above and beyond that the staff time of having this agenda and everything be in so many different places so that it's so easily viewable by your unique search style or your go-to place? Like, at what point are we gobbling up unnecessary time to have the same information in five different places? That's not for me to answer. However, you all want this position notifying the public of these meetings is fine. It's just, you know, we update the sandwich board, we print out hard copies, we put them around town, we email to the listserv. I put it on the website, it's on the town calendar. And it's just kind of like, I'm not going to satisfy everyone. We could do it perfect and we will still get nasty grams. Where, where's the fine line? But something for future discussion, I guess.
I just want to do it consistently, whatever we do, I want to do it consistently.
I think that's smart, I think that, that's probably the best, the, the best thing right there. And then Maureen Spencer did just comment and say, I agree with Penny. So.
I agree with John. Every time we've been inconsistent, we, we pay a price.
Yep. So, I don't have anything else, I have some things that I need to grab. So, scheduling next meetings, you can do it now or you can do it after executive session, whatever you want to do.
January 5th, January 12th and January 7th.
Yep, perfect.
And then we, we're already scheduled in February as well.
Wait, 5th and 12th? Those are, those are one week after another. Yeah, so the 5th is actually the first Tuesday of the month.
Yeah, you've actually got the 5th and the 26th, so the two that we picked.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
Then the 7th was?
The workshop.
Yep, workshop.
And February was the 9th and the 23rd.
I'm sorry, I missed that, I had to step aside, what do we, what do we have? I know.
Scheduled already, meetings.
I have the 7th.
The 5th of January, the workshop on the 7th of January.
Yeah, I have that.
And the select board on the 26th of January.
And, and we have, do we have February scheduled?
On the 9th of February, where we're going to start talking budget. And the 23rd of February, we've scheduled meetings.
Thank you, sorry about that.
No, no problem.
Yeah, the, so the state of emergency lasts until January 20th. And then we get to Zoom for another 30 days, but I think that we'll still be safe to Zoom you from in February and March, John.
I think the state of emergency is going to be extended.
Yeah.
Not unlikely.
All right. Can I have a motion to go into executive session?
I move we go enter an executive session pursuant to Title 1, MRSA, Section 4056A1 to discuss a personnel matter.
I second the motion, sir.
All right, it's been moved in second then, all in favor?
I do need a bio brick before we, before we talk though.
No, no problem.
Yeah, me too.
Thank you so much for your patience and your participation.
And Owen, you're going to try to find that personal property?
Yep. It was personal property, I got to send this out to Jan and parking spaces, yep. But I'll get to the personal property before the, and Sandra, if you could, if you could log yourself out, it would be appreciated.